This is wrong. She's got public comment here. Public comment is the very first thing. Hi Marie.
Marie.
Right?
This is a virtual one, so that's virtual. Board recognition we're not having, so it really could be.
It. We want to welcome you to our board meeting this evening and call it to order. We appreciate those of you that are with us in attendance. And I want to excuse Mr. Zerbakan this evening, who is ill. He is actually on our agenda to be recognized, but we're going to put that off when he recovers and gets back with us. So we would like to invite each of you to stand if you would, and we're going to invite our student board member Kaylee Cardenas to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin our meeting with a public comment period. The public comment period shall not exceed 30 minutes with individual presentations limited to two minutes. Speakers will be shown a sign when you have 30 seconds left and a stop sign when their two minutes has ended, and at that time I'll ask you to finish and I'll call the next speaker. Public comment is reserved for speakers who reside within Davis School District unless otherwise noted by the presiding board member. We would like you to provide your name and the topic you wish to address when you come to the podium if you would please. Speakers shall be recognized and invited to provide comments by the presiding board member. The presiding board member may hear public comments in any order or sequence and is not limited by arrangement shown on the signup sheets. The public comment period shall not be used to air complaints concerning bidding, contracts, employment, or personnel issues, to criticize or defame district employees or board members, or to make complaints for which other avenues for appeal exist. This period can't be used for public comments regarding individual student education issues. Person speaking shall direct their comments to the presiding board member. Members of the board and the superintendent may ask questions of any person who addresses the board only upon approval of the presiding board member. And finally, the board is enabled by law to deliberate or take action on items raised during the public comment period that is not otherwise on the board agenda. And we would ask also if you would, please refrain from cheering or booing, clapping. We would like to maintain that order if we could, please. Let's begin with Sarah. Is it Cressip? Thank you.
Thank you so much for giving me this time. I am going to address problems with Summit. Number one, it enables procrastination. Work that is assigned in August can be turned in the first week of June, and many students do this. If it is allowed, we should not be surprised or disappointed when students do it. This is creating horrendous habits that will not serve them well in life. For some reason, schools do not seem to be able to change any aspect of the Summit program, or they certainly would have changed this major flaw. Number two, confusing online platform. It's like a crazy tree with so many branches, and it is only the oral instructions from a teacher that tells students which branches they're supposed to pay attention to and which to ignore. This convoluted, confusing tree with three different timelines for every class creates major roadblocks to learning. Also, there is a crazy amount of educational jargon on the online outline, even at the junior high level. It looks like Greek to the students and just adds to the confusion. Number three, loss of social learning environment. At Farmington High School, kids are already separated into classrooms by ability such as resource, general, honors, AP, and CE. There's no reason that kids in these classrooms should be on individual timelines. It becomes a logistical nightmare for the teacher to teach them at all different levels and speeds, but it doesn't matter because they are teaching themselves. It's like homeschool at a public high school. If they were learning together, they would have the advantages of covering the content together and assisting one another. Number four, teachers are discouraged from lecturing, which most of us associate with teaching. My son is taking an honors history class in eighth grade that is not Summit, and it is his favorite class. The teacher lectures the whole time, and he takes notes, and he is learning so much. He is devastated that next year his favorite subject will be a Summit class, and there will be little lecturing. Thank you so much.
Jennifer Savage.
My name is Jennifer Savage. I'm also going to comment on Summit. I just wanted to play this.
Summit is really stupid because it's hard to stay on track. You're always working to stay on track. It stresses you out like crazy, and it makes me hate school.
This is for you to make the public comment.
I'm sorry?
I would ask you to make the public comment if you would. This is for you, not to have a recording.
That's not allowed?
No.
Dang it. Okay, well, I just, I'll just tell you what's on the recording. It's a few of my kids and my kids' friends that just said how much they hate Summit. And my daughter at Utah State feels like it really hasn't prepared her to be prepared for college. My son is not in school anymore because of Summit. They told us, his principal told us, he can't attend the school if he does not like Summit and if he doesn't do well on Summit. She told us that we can't attend that school, which, that's not right. That's, we need to have an opportunity to be at the school. I realize some people like Summit, that's why I'm asking the board to make Summit an opt-in option, so we can all work together to come up with something that works for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Katrien Hawks.
Hello, so today I prepared a speech to talk about the current problem with racial issues going on in the district. So I want to start by thanking you all very much for letting me come here today to speak with you. I love that I'm seeing efforts from the district trying to address the current racism issues in Davis School. Recently, in my mentoring class, we were playing a video. The teacher told us to quiet down and listen because this was important. I've seen this in some other videos and heard some things about this issue, and I was glad to hear it, but I noticed something. None of these videos actually mention racism, and some kids have no idea this is even an issue. It even took me a minute to recognize the purpose of the video. It seems as though you are trying to address an issue without addressing it directly. I love that you're trying to make a change, but we can't be trying to avoid saying it out loud. The fact that we are dealing with racism should not need to be censored. It should be addressed. I was taught that history often repeats itself because no one learns from it. We need to learn from this experience so these issues don't repeat themselves in the future. We can't keep coming at this and other issues in the district as though they are all the same. In fourth and fifth grade, I got to participate in a wax museum for famous historical figures and abolitionists. I got to learn about the struggles and the triumphs of others, and that just because it doesn't affect me doesn't mean it's not a problem and that I can't help solve it. It gave me a new perspective from someone such as myself in a place of more privilege than doesn't usually experience. As a result of the civil rights movement, we have Martin Luther King Junior Day and Black History Month, but most teachers still refer to racism and other adversities in past tense, as if they are over and done with, but they are not. And a lot of the same issues I learned about in the wax museum, we still have today. We have to be more direct if we want to solve these issues. Thank you so much for letting me come here today to talk about this, and I hope what I said makes a difference, a positive difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Katrien. Sarah Johnson.
May I approach the board?
Sure. If you want to give those to me, I'll pass them out.
I don't have enough copies for everybody, so I don't know, as long as you get one.
Okay.
Thank you. I love you, friends. My name is Sarah Johnson, and I just wanted to bring up that in a letter dated December 2nd, 2021, Superintendent Newey along with the board with their names sent a letter to Davis School District parents emphasizing, again, we are reminded how essential and important school safety is, and the bottom line is that we rely on each other to keep our schools safe. Together, we can all make a difference in making our schools a safe places to be. Around that same time, actually at the December board meeting, I came before this board and I read aloud from a book called Out of Darkness, where there's a graphically depicted scene where a middle-aged male molests a young child. I came back last month in January again and asked this board to please do more to protect our children from pornography by fixing the DSD policy that is vague and unclear with regards to these indecent pornographic materials being given to our children while they are at school. The state of Utah has decreed pornography to be a public health crisis, and we know from multiple peer-reviewed articles and studies that pornographic and indecent material is harmful, especially to the healthy development of children. I am providing you all with a written copy of just some of the books, along with excerpts and pictures, and we've even given you a QR code for ease that currently are being given out to our children while they're on Davis School District property, as well as applicable federal and state law. Utah has countless laws with regard to this subject, and while Utah has an affirmative defense exception for educational institutions, I see no educational value in giving 12-year-olds information on how to use their thumbs to masturbate, as the book I'm currently challenging at my son's school explains. Quite frankly, I do not feel that my children are safe or protected. I've lost, you guys have lost my trust, and the best interests of our children are not being considered. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson. Jennifer Brooks.
Hello, school board members. As you know, you are elected by Davis County taxpayers and accountable to those taxpayers. You are held accountable for school quality, the learning of students, and student achievement. Student achievement is a responsibility of this board. The superintendent is your employee. You hold him accountable for school quality and student achievement. By allowing district leadership to scale Summit Learning's whole-school reform in our schools, it is clear that you support their model of learning. I want it to go on public record so your constituents know what you support. You support signing over local control and taxpayer-funded schools to the requirements of Summit Learning owned by the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative. You support Summit's learning model, including student-centered classrooms, students directing their own learning, students pacing their own learning, project-based learning, and teachers as facilitators. All of these are low-performing strategies. They are coupled together and handed to our students, posturing them to struggle. You support training teachers as facilitators to Summit's learning platform. This is a one-to-two-year process. We do not own this platform. You support excessive screen time when students come for in-person learning. You support an unequal opportunity to learn, as students learning the same content in the same class are told to learn differently from different sources at a different pace and learn different things, some with teaching, most without. This is inequitable schooling. You support Summit's whole-school reform in a school based solely on their aggressive marketing. They have disregarded educational research. They care about market share. They do not care about the success of our children. In the classroom, Summit fails students because it fails to meet the learning needs of students, and it appears that you support Summit Learning.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Ginevra Prothor.
Good evening. I just wanted to just thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak tonight. So first, I want to mention today is February 1st, so it is Black History Month, and I'm really excited that my son's getting to learn a lot about black history this month. And so it's very important, like the students before me did say, that history is something that we need to make sure we don't repeat if it's bad. And so, and I'm very thankful for the teachers in my son's school that have been teaching, my children have been in the Davis County School District since the early 2000s, so I'm very thankful for the school district. And they've also been to the wax museum, so I find that a connection for me as well. I also want to let you know that we have some of the most amazing teachers in this district. Today, my heart is just so incredibly open and happy because my son's teacher left a message on my voice recorder, my voicemail, saying that he's doing such a good job, and she's really proud of him. It's been such a hard time during COVID, and for him to have missed pretty much his sophomore, junior, now he's a senior year from doing the things he would like to, because we do believe in masking and boosting. He has had COVID once, and it was bad, but the teachers that have supported him and loved him, they're going to be in my heart forever. So I want you to know that we have some really good teachers. I want to keep these teachers. I know several teachers are going to walk up and quit if Senate Bill 0114 passes, and they will be quitting before the, before the school year is even over. And I don't think that it's a bad thing to talk about in public. I think it should be talked about in public, and as school board members, you can also call your legislators and your representatives. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Morrison.
My name is Kimberly Morrison. I am commenting on the Summit Learning Platform. For over a year, parents have requested the district and administrators to survey parents and students who have used the Summit platform. Despite the requests, no surveys have been done. A few months ago, a group of parents, students, and teachers collaborated to make our own surveys. Our goal was to help parent and student voices be heard. I now represent the voices of 434 parents and 193 students in the Davis School District. The last question on the survey is an optional free response for comments on the Summit platform. I presented to each of you in your manila envelope tonight 354 comments. I plead with you to read each response. Some of the comments from the survey tear at my heart when I hear how students and parents are hurting. One student quote, "My mom always says I'm smart, but this makes me feel stupid." A mom. "I want to give up, and so does my student. I no longer know how to help him. I have five kids. Summit is destroying my seventh grader. He feels depressed and upset, saying he's worthless and will never succeed. He's never felt this way before." I have three requests for the school board. Number one, please require schools using the Summit platform to follow Clearfield High School's current example and make Summit an opt-in program. Number two, President Robinson has agreed to put Summit on the agenda for the March 15th Board Workshop. I request that the board give me time at that workshop to present the rest of the data collected from the survey. Number three, I request that parent stakeholders be invited to participate in the March 15th Workshop discussion. Thank you.
Loriann Berg.
Thank you, board. My name is Loriann Berg, and I will be discussing Summit today. My husband and I are the parents of five children that attend schools in Davis School District. I have three students attending Snowhorse Elementary, one at Centennial, and my oldest is on a variance at Davis High. I currently am employed by a higher ed institution, and I currently hold at an adjunct position. I supervise student teachers in several districts, including Alpine, Provo, Nebo, Jordan, Granite, Wasatch, Houston, and DC. Prior to COVID, I supervise students in China. Because of my profession, I was approached by several parents after Farmington High adopted the Summit Learning Platform. These parents asked me to research this platform and gain professional insights into this adopted program. I accepted this invitation prior to having any of my personal children participate in Summit. I began to learn about this program. I do not have the time in this forum to outline the many concerns I have about this program, however, I will state that this program does not align with what we teach our previous teachers as they utilize components of PCBL in their personal pedagogy. I will also state that this platform lacks the pedagogical underpinnings to adequately support the diverse learning needs of students that are classified as SED, students with 504s, and especially our ELL students. I now have personal experience with the Summit platform and the negative impact that it has had on my daughter's academic experience. She no longer exhibits enjoyment in learning or attending school. Additionally, the frustration that she experiences daily increases the stress of our entire family. At the end of second term, 69% of all the students in her teachers' math classes, multiple math classes, were failing. That's 69%. This is alarming. This is unacceptable, and this must be reviewed. This deserves the attention of the administration, the district, and the school board. As an educator in a higher education realm, I do not endorse the Summit program. Please strive to get endorsements from people that have professional experience. Thank you.
Mary Alton.
My name is Mary Alton, and I'm here to discuss the Summit program. I have two students at Mueller Park Junior High, one in ninth grade and one in seventh grade. In preparation for this evening, I have reviewed an evaluation of what makes consistent characteristics of high-performing schools. One of the practices that high-growth schools and districts use is referred to as planned abandonment. This is a process of regularly reviewing what the school or district is doing and eliminating those efforts that produce a minimal return. Good-to-great organizations not only have the discipline to do certain things well, they also have the discipline to stop doing what no longer works. High-performing schools create not-to-do lists and are willing to at least temporarily suspend initiatives that are not directly contributing to improve, improving student learning. I've been very concerned. My daughter is in an honors math course. It's her only Summit course. Yesterday, she was in her class, and the teacher wanted to know, "How is school going for all of you this year?" Seven or eight students raised their hands to talk about how awful they feel the Summit Learning Program is, and the teacher stopped them short and said, "We're not talking about that program. That program is great. Let's talk about your curriculum." I sent a letter after a meeting with the principal, the interim principal at Mueller Park, asking for a student satisfaction survey. We have a high school principal that is interested in having Summit implemented at the school, has sent 20, at least 20 different teachers to Farmington to investigate Summit Learning. However, a student satisfaction survey was denied. I think it's very important that if we're going to be a high-performing school district, that we actually look at how our students are performing and how they feel under this platform. So when you meet on March 15th, I ask that you please fully flesh out all of these issues. Thank you.
Our last presenter will be Denise Wilmore.
Good evening. I'm going, I'm going to be talking about the recent stipend. So President Robinson and Vice President Stevenson, Superintendent Newey, and the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm a second-grade teacher at Valley View Elementary and currently serving as a president of Davis Education Association. I would like you for, I would like to thank you for providing a $500 stipend to all employees in Davis District. I've been at numerous board meetings in the last few years, and I know this is a really difficult job. I have witnessed the hard work that you do in order to meet the needs of everyone in the Davis community. The past two years have been very difficult for educators and staff throughout the district, and it has been extremely helpful to know that the board supports the employees of Davis District. One constant is that you have recognized and supported difficult circumstances that staff members face each day. In addition to the recent stipend, thank you for providing additional early-out days at the end of each quarter and for elementary teachers, and for approving the tax increase which made it possible to enhance educators' salaries. Teachers have been reaching out to me and expressing their gratitude for the most recent stipend. I wanted you to know I wanted you to know that your efforts have not gone unnoticed. DEA and all teachers are extremely grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to all of you who made public comments. We're going to move to our student performance. This evening, we have a student virtual performance. This is from Fremont Elementary, and I'm going to invite Shanda Stanger, our curriculum supervisor, to come to this podium, and she'll introduce our student presentation this evening. Thank you.
President Robinson, Vice President Stevenson, board members, and superintendency, we are excited to bring and highlight what Fremont Elementary is doing this year. I'm going to give a little bit of context. I don't normally, but before COVID hit, we had five elementary schools that were ready to bring in a BTS arts specialist, and Fremont was one of them. We found opportunities for arts integration at each of those schools, but Fremont was one of the schools we wanted to really focus on and help utilize arts integration to support that school. So we had, we adjusted one of our instructional coaches to be an integration coach, and half of her time is spent at Fremont Elementary, working with classroom teachers. So our video tonight shows two student performances, kindergarten and third grade, and then just a couple comments from the teachers about the BTS arts integration program and what that looks like. So I'm going to invite Bethany Struthers up so that she can share a little bit about each of those performances.
Thank you for this opportunity on behalf of myself and the other teachers who I have had the oppor- opportunity to collaborate with. What you're going to see in this video is kindergarten, and you're going to see their learning and process. So integration is not just about a final performance, but about the process of getting there. So you're going to see them learning in their classroom as they learn how to replace the first sounds of letters, which is an important skill that they learn in kindergarten. And then you'll also see the third grade. There's just more of a performance piece. They're going to do a song called Rhythm Stick Line Dance, and we hope you enjoy. Thank you.
And while they pull up that video, I also wanted to just share our visitors and support. We have Kathy Jensen from USBE, who's the music and theater board member we have, or what do you call, not education specialist. We have Kelly Bruce-Glynn, who is the dance, visual art, and film studies from USBE here as well. We have Tamara Goldbogen, who is our Weber State Partner, and then Lisa Clough, who's artworks for kids. We were doing a presentation across the street with our classroom teachers, and I just invited them to come with us because they have been a huge part of this program with us.
Thank you for being with us.
One thing that they do is a silly name song. And so when they do the silly name song, as silly as it sounds to them, they're actually learning to change that first sound in words. So they're using their own names or names of their friends in class. They're changing the first sound to a different sound, a different letter sound, and then they have to blend that new sound back together, which is part of our curriculum, is that they can isolate that first sound and being able to blend it together, that, that for some of them can just be hard to do. And so while they're having fun, they're learning to do that.
(Singing) Let's play the silly name song. We take the first sound of the music. We start by saying his name, always has the same. Luke, Luke. Now let's start with D. Woo. Now let's start with D. Do. Is that silly?
You're a doggy. Ew.
Well, there you go. I've been working with Bethany Struthers in arts integration for a couple years now. We started out doing a lot of interesting stuff with language arts and really pulling that into our language arts curriculum. This year recently, we started working with her in terms of our mathematics instruction, third, in third grade mathematics. Multiplication is an integral part of their learning. It's the major source. But research also shows that they learn those multiplication facts better when it's play, when they don't realize they're learning those facts. So bringing that arts integration in, the drum beats with the multiplication and just different things like that, has really worked to benefit my students greatly in how they are learning their multiplication skills.
Well, and I love too the fact that every single kid is actively engaged. Like, it doesn't matter their ability level, they are able to participate. I wish we'd had the opportunity sooner. It's been, it's nice playing ideas off another person and saying, "Hey, you know, this is where my kids are struggling. What can we do? Let's try this." And it's been amazing.
Can we take it back to the beginning? Yeah. Rhythm stick line dance. Let's go. Step and click, step and click, turn around, and click, click, click. Step and click, step and click, turn around, and click, click, click. Slide to the left, click, click, click. Slide to the right, click, click, click. Slide to the left, click, click, click. Slide to the right, click, click, click. One, two. One, two. Step and click, step and click. Come on. Now walk it up, walk it up. And click, click, down and click, down and click. Pose for the camera and click, click, click. Down and click, down and click. Pose for the camera and click, click, click. Slide to the left, click, click, click. Slide to the right, click, click, click. Slide to the left, click, click, click. Slide to the right, click, click, click. Freestyle with it, freestyle with it, freestyle with it. Go wild with it, freestyle with it, freestyle with it, go wild with it. This is DJ Willis. I hope you enjoy the rhythm stick line dance. Eight, 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 eight.
Bethany, we'd invite you and our guests, and Shanda, come up if you would, please.
I can tell that one student learns through movement.
Definitely.
That's real easy to ask.
We've got a free market we're going to bring in next week, but we appreciate Bethany all you do, and thank you so much.
President, while you're still coming back, want to give a special recognition to Ms. Clough. Lisa, stand up for just a minute. Now, I, this is the most persistent person on the planet, and it's because she believes in what she's doing, and she's doing great things. The Beverly Taylor Sorensen Foundation is an incredible philanthropic organization, and you can read about them. But Lisa is, I'm not sure your role, but you do everything. And, and this time of year especially because it's a rolling ask for the legislature, and it's a, it's something that our district does a little bit different than some districts, and we appreciate Ms. Stanger for the application of the funding. But this is really, really important to our district. And Lisa, you know, I've been in so many meetings with her, and she always has the same bright smile. Asking for money is not an easy job and, and support, and she just does such a phenomenal job for our teachers and for our students. And I just wanted to especially thank you, Lisa, because you've been through several directors, and I'm not even sure if they, did they quit hiring one and just let you do it? Because, you know, you, you just do a fantastic job, and the Sorensen, Taylor Sorensen family is so incredibly generous and, and good to, to, to our students. So please take that back to them from our district, and, and thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. All right, Board, we're going to move to information items. We're going to turn the time to Vice President Stevenson for a foundation update.
Had the opportunity of meeting with the foundation last week. Great group of people, and appreciate all of them. Support for our teen centers continues coming in. We are, well, I personally stand in awe by the outreach and support of our community and what they have, do for our most vulnerable students. A big thank you goes out to these four donors this last month, and all of this goes towards our teen centers. North Point Development, $37,000. Loft House Foundation, $36,000. Young Automotive Group, $25,000. Watson, McDonald's, and M Squared, $50,000. What a, what a great donation for our teen centers. There was an exciting activity happening on January 7th. Our partners at Foot Locker visited Central Davis Junior High with an incredible surprise for the students. This came about because of a teacher. In early December, Foot Locker Senior Director Tyler Saxey, who is located in Florida, tweeted out that he was looking to spread holiday cheer and asked for help finding individuals who needed new shoes. Katie Barber, a teacher and assistant basketball coach at Central Davis, saw the tweet and responded, "What was initially going to be new shoes for four or five of the students in need turned out to be a $3,000 donation from Foot Locker to provide every player with $100 to purchase new shoes or in some cases clothes." Tyler even flew out from Florida to personally deliver the gift cards and meet the students. We're always humbled and grateful for people who literally do go the extra mile to do good. A huge shout out to Katie Barber. I wish she was here tonight so we could all give her a personal thank you. But she responded to a simple tweet, and look what it did for her students. Great day at Central Davis. The foundation also received this last month, $124,000 from McKenney, McKenney-Vantul Grant to assist students who are experiencing homelessness, to help them to graduate from high school. In Davis School District, students who have housing in Syracuse insecurities graduate at 70% rate, where our average is 96% rate. The foundation has hired with that grant money four success coaches this month to work with each of our high schools to mentor, assist, and coach our high school seniors to graduation. It is their goal, as the foundation, to graduate and prepare all 70 seniors for a post-secondary experience. The coaches will also assist in preparing the juniors for summer programs and early fall credit recovery, so they're on their track to graduate. And then last but not least, the gala is coming on June 8th, so mark it on your calendars. And its theme this year is Lights, Camera, Take Action: The Sequel, if that sounded familiar to another year. So exciting things. Once again, I express my appreciation to all those people on the foundation, all those donors. Great group of people in this community, and I give special thanks to all of them, along with the whole board. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Ms. Gerard, let's turn some time to you for the USBA report.
Okay. Just as a reminder, usually we have two Day on the Hail's. So this year, one was scheduled for tomorrow. Do not go to that one because that one has been canceled. They've been combined into one event, and it's on our calendar. And then I, I passed out one of these to each of you, and I'm sure you've seen it before, but I thought we could look at it while we're talking about it. So our USBA Legislative Day on the Hill for 2022 will be Tuesday, February 22nd, and you have that in front of you. It will start with breakfast in the rotunda at 9:00 a.m. And you can see, we did have Governor Cox, but now we will have Lieutenant Governor Henderson come speak to us, and the other speakers have not been set yet. But we also are trying to set up some visits with our legislators, and so we'll be working on that, and that'll be a great opportunity to visit with them. Or you can go to committee meetings, and then we'll have lunch, and afterwards, there will be just three performances, and I'm not sure who those are going to be from yet. But that's, that's the difference between what we've done for several years and what we're doing this year. And after that, again, we're going to try to set up some more visits with our legislators. So, hope to see you all there on the 22nd. It's going to be a great day, an informative day, and a great chance to get together with our legislators. And just wanted to, to mention, it is so important that you are looking at those bills that are being discussed in the legislature right now. There are always a lot of education bills, so pay attention to those. And I just wanted to point out, your input does make a difference. As in the recent case of HB 234, there was a lot of input on that one, and that one has been pulled. And there are many to watch for. You, you get your email from Lexi Cunningham, and pay close attention to that, but also be on the site, le.utah.gov, and you can participate. You can watch the committee meetings and the hearings, and participate. That way, you can even speak to it. Just one to watch, that there's been a lot of discussion on SP 114, so pay attention to that one. But, but please reach out to your legislators because it does make a difference. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gerard. We're going to move to the superintendent, superintendent's report.
Thank you, President and Board. Want to highlight a few things, students and so forth, and then take care of the two items that are listed there. Silas Becker, one of our Davis Connect students, he was a sixth grader, was one of eight students in Utah selected to win a $1,000 College Savings Scholarship in the Make Your Mark Bookmark Contest. So congratulations to Silas. Two of our students from West Point Junior received top honors at the Veterans of Foreign Affairs Speech Contest as Outstanding Spokesperson of the Future. That was the name of the contest, Outstanding Spokesperson of the Future. Kaylee K. Jenkins was awarded $100 for first place, and Abigail Thane received $75 for second place. Jessica Jensen, Farmington Junior High School, was honored by the American Geographical Society, the GeoBoost Grant to purchase resources for additional activities there at the school. West Point Junior High students, Amaya Garcia, Guadalupe Rodriguez, and Sienna Resiner, Resiner, were winners of ONE Utah, a revolutionary contest, and received tickets to see Hamilton in Salt Lake. The, the contest was to provide revolutionary ideas that can help Utah today. So congratulations to those students. Two of our students in Clearfield were recently recognized by Mark Shepard for designing the Centennial logo, Savannah Huff of Clearfield High School, and Natalie Corbridge at Legacy Junior High. Both submitted, or they submitted the artwork for the logo. Leighton High Cheer Team placed first in the state 6A competition. Woods Cross High Cheer Team second in the 5A. Bountiful High Cheer Team placed second in the 5A competition for sideline timeout. Cleefield Junior High Varsity Team placed second in the 6A Junior Varsity, and the Syracuse Junior High Cheer Team won first place in the state competition. Legacy placed second, and South Davis placed third, so a lot of strong cheerleading at the junior high level. Leighton High, excuse me, Leighton High School Crowned Miss Emily Graff, or they didn't crown her, but actually the state crowned her United States of America's Teen Utah 2022. So very great honor for Miss Graff. She'll, her one-year reign will be focusing teens on finding your passion through service. And Gabrielle Fessler was awarded by the NAACP at the Martin Luther King Junior Luncheon. She's a senior at Syracuse High, and it was great. She was awarded one of their scholarships, and she was a, a year ago, it might have been two years ago, one of our science fair winners. And Alexis, Ms. Lunt's daughter, had worked with her specifically- And Alexis, Ms. Lunt's daughter had worked with her specifically through our science department to help her enhance that project and really has done a great job with that. So congratulations to Gabrielle. Board, couple things listed on the, the program. We'll just, actually, I'm going to move, is John on the agenda for asking for new COVID protocol? Okay, I'll bump that one to there instead of cover that right now. Let me just give you some of the specifics of that so you can know some detail of that. HB one eighty-three, it will, is determinant of COVID protocols moving forward. And that, we're asking during the business part of the, the meeting to receive authorization from the board for the next month to, with HB one eighty-three, it outlines the procedure to submit to the, to the Speaker of the House, President of the Senate, the State Superintendent, and the Governor, our plan to receive waiver for the four-day in-person mandatory requirement. And so is what we have to do as a district is submit our plan. It goes to that group for approval and/or recommendation or adjustment, comes back and, and then is enacted after receiving that. So as you know, that can, out of ninety-two schools, that can mean a lot of board meetings if we convene a board meeting for every single time we exceed the threshold. So that would have to follow the legislative protocol of HB one eighty-three, of course, but we're asking for the board's authorization to construct that letter and submit that to that group when a school exceeds the threshold. Now, in March, that, that, the threshold will change to seven days, which dramatically changes the threshold counts because of the way they roll in and out and, and are accumulated in the totals. So we anticipate less demand or less need to submit for that, at that time. But for the next three or four weeks, we anticipate, the way things have gone, that, that there may be some thresholds exceeded. Okay, well, it's only an information item. Okay, well, we'll have to forego that.
Mr. Carter, on, with it being listed as an information item, I don't believe we can vote. It has to be on a business item, doesn't it?
It's not listed as a, as a business item, so you can't take action on it. You could on the fifteenth, sixteenth, the next meeting, yeah.
So between now and then, we'll have to possibly convene a special board meeting if those thresholds are exceeded. And at that time, we'll inform the board.
Yeah, and the, and the governor, has he signed that yet?
Uh, no.
Okay, all right, good.
President Robinson?
Yes, go ahead.
Just a quick question. When you come back on the fifteenth for a board voter, if we convene prior to that, could you have something in writing, like a draft of what that letter would look like?
Yeah.
That would be helpful.
And Mr. Zerbak, and we will call him tonight and get him out of bed. He anticip, he just had a kind of an emergency this morning, so. But, yes.
But it sounds like we're in a holding pattern for right now.
Yeah.
Until the governor signs and then we, we can convene if necessary.
Yes, so it is a little bit of a holding pattern and we'll continue to do that. Next item on the agenda, we want to take an opportunity tonight. I want to introduce Dr. Thompson and let her kind of give you a little more detail on our safeguarding group that we've welcomed as our consultant for moving forward with the work we're doing with addressing the findings of the Department of Justice report. I will just say that have, again, a long history with the Linton family. Curtis Linton and Dr. Christie, we have a long history with her as well. Great people and we're thankful they're here and I look forward to the opportunity.
President Robinson to Vice President Stevenson, Superintendent Newley, school board, and community. It's great to be here this evening and I'm so excited because we have hired our consultants. It's the safeguarding group and they are working with us as we collaborate with the DOJ to meet the requirements that are required of us and to work with our community, to work with our educators, to work with our students, to make this the best school district that we possibly can. I think you'll be pleased when you meet them. I'll ask them to come up and to introduce theirselves. So if Dr. Kathleen Christie would come up and also Mr. Curtis Linton. And we're excited to have Ms. Melanie Linton here with us tonight as well. So we'll have them introduce theirselves to you. And again, we are grateful for this partnership.
Good evening to the Board, Superintendent Newley and President Robinson. I am Dr. Kathleen Christie. I am a member of the safeguarding consultancy team. I am thrilled to be working with you. As superintendent said, I'm very familiar with Davis. I recently retired, four years ago, from a little small district to your south and spent years working in educational equity in the Salt Lake City School District and retired after forty-three years in education. And I went through the system, teacher, principal, director, assistant superintendent, kind of did it all. And thought I was retired, but I guess I'm not because I'm enjoying working with you. I look forward to all the times that we will have together, just continuing to build on what you already have to create a, a school district and environment that's safe and for all of our students. So again, thank you for this opportunity and I look forward to seeing more of you. Thank you.
Yes, Board, Superintendent, we are honored to be here. I mean, it's, it's the simplest way to put it. It is an awesome amount of work. It is such meaningful work. And one thing which is meaningful for me personally with this is that my first work in equity in the state of Utah, I'd done work outside of Utah, but my first, the first school system that I did any work with equity was actually with Dr. Jackie, with the Equity Leadership Team fifteen years ago, sixteen years ago, something like that. So it's very meaningful for us to come and to be able to contribute at this time. You know, what the, we talk so often about the settlement. The settlement is a forcing factor. It, it moves us forward to take on these actions. But what really starts to matter going forward is the plan. The plan ultimately to, to guarantee that every single student who walks in the doors of a Davis school knows the school is there, represents them, supports them, honors them within their own unique identity and needs. It's a big task, but we look forward to it. You know, it's a, we'll, we'll be with you for multiple years over the course of this. But we just want, you know, the Board, the Superintendent, see the community, know they can reach out to us. We are here to learn from the community, learn from the schools as we lay out this plan, and then very much to work, work together as, as, as we march forward in this really awesome work. So thank you very much.
Thank you both. We will look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Dr. Thompson, thank you. Board, let's move to consent items. We need, any consent items that you would need more information on or would like to move to a business item? And a motion to approve Consent Items one and two, please.
I'll move that we approve Consent Items one and two.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Stevenson, second by Ms. Gerard, to approve Consent Items one and two. Discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. We'll move to business items. We're going to begin with inviting Ms. Keller for our board calendar. Oh, excuse me, Ms. Keller, hang on. Hang on, our board calendar, then your calendar. The board calendar exhibit, if we look at that board, there's a couple of things I just wanted to highlight. You'll notice that our, in regards to our superintendent search, we begin a week from tonight. And that will be at Clearfield High. But on the tenth, we'll be at Davis High. That's a change from what we had originally talked about. And then on the sixteenth, we've also made a change there from original plan. We're going to be at Bountiful High. Okay? And then, Ms. Gerard, you had made mention of the February twenty-second. I see that on the schedule as well.
Mm-hmm.
With our NSBA conference in, in, first part of March.
USBA.
Oh, he's talking about the NSBA.
NSBA, yeah.
That's April.
Any, I mean, April, I'm sorry. Any additions or corrections to the calendar? A motion to approve calendar for February, March, and April?
I move we approve the calendar for, the board calendar for February, March, and April of 2022.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Tanner, second by Ms. Stevenson, to approve the board calendar for February, March, and April of 2022. Discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Ms. Keller, this is 2022, 2023 school year calendar on a second and final reading.
President Robinson, Robinson, sorry about that. Vice President Stevenson, members of the Board, Superintendent Newley, and Mr. Carter, I'm happy to present the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three school year calendar for you for second and final reading. The calendar was approved by the Board on first reading on January fourth. We accepted employee and public comment from then until Friday, January twenty-eighth. In all, seven hundred eighty-two comments were received and read. Comments included requests such as starting the school year later, moving term and dates, placement of professional development days, winter break, and a variety of other recommendations. In response to the employee and community feedback, the committee has made the following adjustments to the calendar that was approved on first reading. Winter break will begin on December twenty-first and end on January third. This will accommodate the observed holiday on January second. First term will end on Monday, October thirty-first, and this will be an early out day for elementary. The Fall Professional Day will be on November first and, and second term will begin on November second. Elementary conferences will be held during the week of November seventh. Easter was incorrectly identified on the previous calendar and now is correctly shown on Sunday, April ninth, 2023. I present the 2022 through 23 school calendar in anticipation that you will approve it on second and final reading. Thank you.
I move we approve the 2022, 2023 school calendar as presented by Mrs. Keller.
On a second and final?
On a second and final.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Ms. Tanner, second by Ms. Monkford, is to approve the 2022, 2023 school year calendar on a second and final reading. Discussion on that motion? Ms. Gerard?
I, I just wanted to thank Ms. Keller for all the work that you put in along with the calendar committee because this is a difficult job. And I appreciate the fact that you gathered input from community members and, and faculty and parents. Appreciate that and, and I know that everything was looked at. And I had passed on some input to you and I appreciate the fact that you did look at that and tried to accommodate and, and made some changes from last time. So I appreciate all of the input that you considered. It's a hard job.
You're welcome. It was very, it was a good experience.
Learning experience.
Yeah.
Mrs. Keller, my question has left my mind. Oh, the, it seems like you made that positive change, I think, around, surrounding October thirty-first and November first. And that made one of the quarters longer than another.
Yes.
Are teachers going to be okay with that or is that going to be frustrating to them or?
Well, I hope they'll be okay with it. I think dealing with a little bit longer first term and shorter second term is better than ending the term before Halloween and then having, it just, it just felt like a better change.
Yeah, yeah, I like it myself. But I just, they'll have to, I think, be aware of that ahead of time and plan around that, I think.
I, I think they've planned around harder things than that. I think they'll be okay.
And then, did you hear, as far as that change went, I'm assuming that was in response to the comments you got. Were those more comments from parents or from teachers that wanted that change?
Both, both. I, I heard a lot from families and from teachers.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
So Board, again, the motion is to approve the 2022, 2023 school year calendar as presented on a second and final reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thanks, Ms. Keller.
Thank you.
Dr. Oster, can we invite you to the podium, please?
Good evening, Board, Superintendent. I just have a couple brief items to bring to your attention. In your packet, you received the Head Start items. In addition, I wanted to just inform you that we're in the process of our annual continuation grant. We'll be submitting that in the next month. We do, don't anticipate any major changes. We have the same funding level and anticipate serving the same number of families and children in the district. So I wanted to mention that. In addition, I also wanted to bring to your attention something that was in your packet. It's our eligibility form. Every family fills out this eligibility form. And to be accepted into the Head Start program, we use a point system and it's based on the greatest need. And this form helps the fam, helps our program identify the needs of the family. A family service worker sits down and meets with the family and, and they identify their stressors and, and situations in the home. And each is given a number and, and we accept families based on the highest need. So I just wanted to let you know that has not changed either from last year. Our policy council voted on both of those items last month and I just wanted to inform you of that. So, thank you.
The grant that you're pursuing, does that require any action by the Board?
Just aware that we're.
Just awareness.
Just awareness that we're intending to apply again.
Okay, so Board, then we are looking at approval of the Head Start, Early Head Start report as indicated with Dr. Oster, that, of the material that's in our packet. So I'd consider a motion, please, to approve that?
I'll make that motion. To approve the, the Head Start items in our packet.
Head Start and Early Head Start.
Yes, for Head Start and Early Head Start.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Phipps, second by Ms. Gerard, to approve the Head Start, Early Head Start report. Discussion on that motion?
Ms. Phipps?
Ms. Phipps?
I just wanted to express again appreciation. It, it is, for me, such a value that Head Start is associated with our school district. And, and what a great advantage that gives the children of Davis County and that connection. And, and as you become more and more aware of the critical need of, of that opportunity to have the early intervention and the engagement of parents from a young age in the education process, I, I just appreciate and just express that. And it's such a pleasure to be able to work with Head Start and to, to watch those parents engage and just express appreciation and, and consider Davis District so fortunate to have Ms. Oster and, and the other leaders that work with Head Start program. Thanks.
Thank you. So we, we have not voted, have we? That was discussion. So let's go back. Our motion is to approve the Head Start, Early Head Start. Our motion is to approve the Head Start, early Head Start report. No more discussion? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thanks, Dr. Oster. We'll turn some time to Mr. Carter regarding the purchase of the O'Reilly Building.
Thank you, President. As was in your packet, we have the opportunity to purchase. It was the O'Reilly parts store there by Syracuse Junior High. And if you're familiar with the area, it's, it's the first building you come to when you go just south of the school. Mr. Warneck, the principal there, kind of clued us into that was for sale, and so we did some investigating, and, and so it's our proposal, and, and before you tonight is, is for your approval is the, approve the purchase agreement to buy that building for $1,650,000. Initially, that will be used as a PE center for yoga, dance, to off, to maybe hopefully bring the students from going over to the elementary school across the street. They can use that. Long-term will be a STEM or health science building that we're excited to, to explore and to expand because their programs are really growing out there. So with that, I'll entertain any questions.
I move that we accept the bid of $1,650,000 to purchase the O'Reilly Building south of Syracuse Junior High.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Eckersley, second by Ms. Tanner, is to approve the purchase of the O'Reilly Parts Building for the purchase price of $1,650,000. Discussion on that motion? Ms. Tanner?
Is there a projected cost for revamping the building?
Haven't got those plans put together yet. So when, when we have that, obviously, we would probably have to bring that back to you for approval.
Thank you.
Ms. Mumford?
Mine's kind of a related question, and maybe you don't know without plans. Do you anticipate, like, next school year, being able to start using that in the fall?
Initially, we're going to use it for the, for the dance and yoga because that basically just requires mats.
Open space.
And open space, which this building is. Whether we'll have it ready for STEM or anything by fall, that would be aggressive. But we'll see where we're at with that.
Other discussion? Board, the motion is to approve the purchase of the O'Reilly Parts Building for the purchase price of $1,650,000. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Mr. Carter, let's go to the resolution to approve the refunding of 2013A bonds.
Thank you, President. As we, as Mr. Lefell explained in, in last workshop, we have the opportunity to refund and pay off in its entirety the 2013A bonds we sold. At that time, we sold $20 million worth. We still owe about $15 million on those, and we will pay those off. And that savings will generate about 1.7 million dollars in savings, almost 10%, a little over 10% of, of that present value. So it would be our request that the, this resolution be adopted, and we'll proceed with, with that sale.
I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale by the Board of Education for not more than 16.5 million aggregate principal amount of its general obligation refunding bonds.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Mumford and second by Ms. Stevenson. The wording of your motion, Ms. Mumford. You said adopt a resolution?
Yeah, I move we adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale.
Or approve. Can we use the word approve?
Yep, we can.
It's probably.
I think they're synonymous.
Okay.
Yep.
The motion by Ms. Mumford, second by Ms. Stevenson, correct? Discussion on that motion? Ms. Tanner?
I just think it's interesting that the amount is very similar to the one, what we just spent for the building, for the O'Reilly building. So the money's already gone.
But it, it's a great opportunity, I think, to, to how, you know, to use this time in the, in the economy and the market to, to issue the sale, so. For sure.
Other discussion? So board, the motion to approve the resolution authorizing the district to issue up just no more than 16,500,000 principal amount of general obligation refunding bonds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Mr. Nofield, can we invite you to the podium, please? We're going to cover policy 10CR-200 on donations, fundraising, and commercialism on a first and final reading.
President, members of the board, there's a five-year review policy up for you today that does four things. First of all, it clarifies that donations from, in schools over $250 have to be received through the foundation. The prior language was discretionary, now it's mandatory. It puts in a reminder that donations received have to be, have to be used equitably. It further clarifies the district prohibition on outside fundraising platforms like GoFundMe. And it reiterates that anyone wishing to distribute flyers electronically or otherwise must follow our approval process through the foundation. It's been reviewed in our policy committee, and we recommend that it pass on first and final reading.
I move that we pass 10CR-200 on donations, fundraising, and commercialism on a first and final reading.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Eckersley, second by Ms. Stevenson, is to pass policy 10CR-200 donations, fundraising, and commercialism on a first and final reading. Discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, President.
Dr. Linford, we'll invite you to the podium for a discussion on junior high and high school fee schedules. These, this is.
President Robinson, Vice President Stevenson, honorable board members, Superintendent Newey, it's good to be with you tonight. Before you is first reading of actually two proposed potential fee schedules. One has, contains the final phase of the legislative audit protocols that would, that require the schools may not charge for textbooks. The second, the second one is in anticipation of House Bill, right now, House Bill 211, that would cover the costs of really all curricular fees and potentially co-curricular fees. So it's before you for a first reading, and I'm, I'm available to answer any questions.
We should have a motion before we have a discussion, Ms. Mumford?
Just question of clarification. So the, the motion on a first reading, we're just putting all of the drafts and different versions out for review and for the public, and then depending how the legislature acts, we'd identify one for a second and final?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I move we accept the junior high and high school fee schedule drafts as presented by Dr. Linford.
On a first reading.
On the first reading.
I'll second that.
Go ahead.
Motion by Ms. Tanner, second by Ms. Gerard. To approve the junior high and high school fee schedules on a first reading. A discussion on the motion? Ms. Tanner?
Yes, Dr. Linford, thanks for this draft, or several drafts. So it looks like in section one of the junior high fee schedule draft, you're getting, you're getting, you're getting rid of the basic registration fees, including the $9 activity fee. But then, the, I noticed that the activity fee shows up at the bottom of that page, section four. It shows up there, the $9 activity fee. So maybe just an explanation of what was going on with that?
Yes, and, and some of that, that shift that you see on the draft is the, is a structural piece within the draft. So the, the only piece remaining of the basic registration fees would be that $9 activity fee that goes towards the student functions that, that all students are, are able and encouraged to attend, primarily in after-hours kinds of events. We thought it more appropriate to fall under administrative fees as a, as a registration fee.
And then I think later on, you also eliminated locker fees. What was the thinking behind that?
Some of that goes to another section of this phase of the legislative audit that says that we, we don't charge students more than, than the actual cost of, of what the fee would, would pay for. So we, we see lockers as school equipment, which is, we're not allowed to charge for that, and we agree. We, that's been in discussions in our, in our fee committee for a number of years about how that money is used to upgrade lockers, especially where students are, are tending to use them less. We, we have been discussing that for a while. And I should note that it has been a prime, priority of our business administrator to, to reduce school fees, including a line item, holding a place in, in the hopes of eliminating school fees. House Bill 211 will help us tremendously with that.
And then the last question had to do with the travel budget. It was 1,000, it's been moved to 1,200. Can you explain a little bit behind the process of making that decision? Were, did you get, you know, itinerary lists from teachers and directors and such to figure out that 1,200 was the, how, how did, how did 1,200 come to be the magic number?
Well, to, to a degree, and, and to be clear, to a degree, that, that is country wisdom. We saw a, a 20% increase, knowing that the requests have been to, to double that. The most frequent requests have been to double the $1,000 amount. We felt that because that stood for at, at least 15 years that I'm aware of at $1,000, that that would be an appropriate first step to see if that can accommodate some of the, some of the inflation with travel. So far, schools have managed, schools have done okay with the $1,000. We find that travel companies have been accommodating and, and find ways to make trips happen. The concern is that some of those trips have to be scaled back once they get there. The bulk of the expense comes from getting them there, and we'd like, we're hoping that $200 will, will allow them to do a, a few of the things they, they used to do in travel.
Yeah, because it seems a shame to spend all that money to get there and then not be able to do anything. I've had a lot of comments from parents and teachers and administrators about the increasing that price. Do we know what other school districts similar to ICIS are using for a regulation for that number?
Some, definitely. Many districts don't travel as frequently as we do, and so it, it hasn't, it hasn't become i- as big an issue. But some schools really don't list a cap, and, and some districts have a, have a smaller cap. But it, it really does, it runs the gamut. I think, I think the biggest determiner, though, is the amount of travel that districts do. That's something that's been popular in Davis School District for those learning opportunities. But in the same token, we've tried to balance that with, you know, extraordinary costs of travel.
Thank you, Dr. Linford.
Ms. Mumford?
Yeah, I just, I thought I'd comment a little because I've served on that fee committee, and I watched kind of that interchange of people that had some different thoughts on travel. It's, it was probably the most discussed item within our committee. We were able to quickly kind of resolve other issues. It speaks to the fact that we're dealing with people from all different socioeconomics, and so we're trying to be sensitive. It's also important to remember that whatever value that we set as the district travel budget, that's the level we have to honor for fee waivers. So while there was some push to, like you said, double it or whatever possibly, we have to keep into consideration that that means we're doubling the cost of, of any trips that we're subsidizing due to fee waivers. So it's kind of a delicate balance. The thing that I appreciated hearing from educators and from parents is they really value having their students go on these experiences. And so looking for ways that we can increase that opportunity for reasonable costs is a good work, and I think this is a good way to kind of test the waters and see if we're meeting inflationary costs and travel increases, and then we can go more in-depth in the future, specifically on travel.
Dr. Lin, for just a clarification, the motion was made to approve the junior high and high school fee schedules on a first reading, but at the bottom of the, the document there, the elementary school fee schedule, no changes.
Correct.
But won't we still have to vote?
You know, we will. The board will have to approve that fee schedule, but as it stands, nothing has changed. Again, there is potential legislation that would, that would eliminate even, you know, after-school program costs.
But our motion is just relative to junior high and high school on a first reading.
You know, that is, that's a good catch, President. I don't, I don't think we included the elementary schedule in your materials, and that was an oversight, but yeah, I think we'd want to also.
It's actually in our material.
Okay, great.
It's in there, it's just not in the motion.
Right. I, I do think we want to include elementary in the motion because we will want that to go be in, in a public meeting twice before April 1st.
So is the elementary one a draft or a final?
It is a final pending legislation that may require that we remove any.
So I guess it's kind of a draft still.
I think we would still do it on a first reading.
It's the first.
Okay. I move that we accept the high school, junior high, and elementary fee schedule drafts on a first reading.
I'll second that.
So motion by Ms. Tanner, second by.
Do you want to, the same second, since it's a replacement motion?
It's a, it's a replacement motion, right? Because she added elementary.
Okay.
So, I don't know how we're supposed to do that.
Well, we have. Yeah, Mr. Carter, we've got a motion on the table.
So did I make an amendment? Is that what?
What we could do is we could vote on the motion, which is the junior high and high school first reading, and then we could have a separate motion for elementary.
If you want to do that.
That'd be the easiest.
I mean, it is listed as the same item in the agenda, but we've only discussed the, the first two pieces of that.
If you want to vote out an amended motion, you could do that.
What's that?
If you want to do an amended motion, including the elementary schedule, you could do that as well.
Okay, Ms. Tanner, you want to just preface your motion with, this is an amended motion, if you would, please?
I, I make an amended motion to add elementary draft fee schedule to the original motion.
Second.
Good with that, Mr. Carter? Okay, motion by Ms. Tanner to amend the original motion, and second by Ms. Stevenson to include the elementary school fee schedule. Any further discussion? Ms. Mumford?
Just one quick comment because Dr. Linford mentioned that public notice. Once, once we have some clarity which draft would be the, the publicly noticed one, are you planning to share that with the public in a direct email of some kind?
Yes, yes, we will. And we, we're already taking extra steps to make sure the public is even aware of, of this reading. We'll continue to do that and make them aware.
Yeah, I think it's a little bit confusing at this point where we've got these two different scenarios, but I definitely want to make sure before we take a final vote that there's a proper notice, so thank you.
And without time constraints, without the April deadline, we, you know, we would be able to do this in a, in a more practical way, but I appreciate the flexibility on this.
Anybody need clarity on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Before we go to board reports, I'd like to turn some time back to Superintendent Newey for just a little bit of information.
Thank you, President. I got, been communicating with Mr. Zerbach in a bit further on the state of COVID management. And he, in calculating numbers tonight, the Health Department has moved in recognition of 183, HB 183, and the anticipation that's going to pass, that they've moved the number beginning tomorrow to seven days. So that significantly affects the numbers that we can't make on our, that we count for the threshold because it reduces the incubation period, the estimated incubation period of the variant. So we anticipate, in, in communicating with him, we anticipate schools, you know, certainly at this time, being significantly under the threshold. And we'll make sure that we follow the, the specifications of the legislation, but wanted just to make the board aware of that so that you'll see that change on the dashboard. It will decrease the, the threshold numbers significantly.
Do, do we need to consider then convening?
Not at this time. We'll, we'll be prepared to, at our next meeting, outline anything that needs to be done, but we don't. outline anything that needs to be done, but we don't anticipate any change.
Let's go to board reports. Kaylee, let's start over there with you. Anything to add tonight?
I don't think so. Just this past month, going to basketball games and planning our Sweethearts dance.
Very good. Mr. Eckersley?
I visited Endeavor Elementary this, since our last meeting. And that was a great experience to, to be able to do that. We have, we have a lot of good people. I, I would say that that experience taught me that the job that our office personnel have of, of getting substitutes is a, is a difficult job. And that $500 stipend that we approved has certainly been well-earned by, by everybody that is jumping in to, to cover and make education still happen in our schools. We also had a finance meeting today, committee meeting, and the details from that will come out in a, in a future meeting. But I just wanted to thank the people in our finance department. I really, really appreciate how forward-looking they are. They don't want, they don't wait for the fire to turn into a, an emergency. They're, they're looking ahead to try to keep those emergencies from happening. And I really appreciate that effort that they do. That's all.
Ms. Tanner?
I've just heard from several teachers recently, the challenging times that we're in right now with, one happened for several years now, about feeling, that feeling burnout from excess demands of keeping up with the many absent students, keeping up with the remote learning requirements, the COVID protocols, being sick themselves and, and finding substitute teachers. I know some Utah school districts, including ours, are doing many things to help support their teachers during this time. One school district I talked with is giving, having one Friday a month be remote so that the teachers can have that day to catch up on their many demands. It might be nice at a future meeting to just hear about all the different things our school district is doing to support these teachers during this difficult time.
Ms. Stevenson?
Is that all, Julie? You're done? Yeah, okay. State employees, addressing what Julie just talked about. So state employees have been given, if I understand right, 30 hours to serve in the schools or to do paid leave for them. So I hope our state employees take that opportunity to do that. And it would be great to see them in the classroom, too. The foundation met last, two weeks ago with the Catalyst Center. What an amazing building that is and how much fun it was to be there. And then Brian is back there.
Yes, yes.
He, he gave a few of us a tour and, of that building and what, I, I just, you've got to go visit it yourself. It's, it's awesome. So thanks for that tour. It was a great day and the foundation were just blown away by, by that building. We are going to have our meetings there from now on out. On, I've heard from a lot of our employees on appreciation for that stipend and I just feel so guilty having them express that appreciation because we're expressing our appreciation to them for it. So, but good, kind people they are. I attended a robotics tournament at Davis High a couple of weeks ago and I'm trying to remember the robotics instructor at Davis, Dane. Oh, amazing man. He ran a great, great robotics. Yeah, he, his heart is in it and I think there's very little pay that comes his way for giving up his entire Saturday to do that. But a good man and those kids at that school, well, all of our schools, a lot of Syracuse schools and were there. And of course, I've been going to basketball games and I'd like to proudly announce that my grandson beat John's grandson the other day. One last thing is I want to express my appreciation to the Board and the Superintendency. I, I lost a sister this last week and, and I, I appreciate their support for that hard time as I watched her leave us and with a, a very terrible disease. So thanks to all of you and to the Superintendency for your support.
Ms. Gerard?
Excuse me. I just have to echo what has been said a couple of times. It's just so nice to, to get those emails and personal conversations of thanks from our employees for the stipend. We're just so happy that we could do that because, oh, they deserve it and more. So we're just so grateful for all of our outstanding employees. I was able to attend an advocacy conference in Washington DC with the USBA officers and Mr. Stoll. And it, it was outstanding and I hope that I have an opportunity, I won't take the time here, but the opportunity to share some of the things that I learned. And, and I think one of the things I enjoyed the most was hearing from a student board panel of students from across the United States. And getting their input was so helpful. And just wanted to express my appreciation to our, our board members here with us. We're grateful for, for their input and I'd like to hear more from them in the future, too. So that was great. And then we did make some visits to our congressmen and most of them were not there. They were back at home. But we, we met with their legislative coordinators and, and able to have some good conversations there as well. I also have, I did a couple of visits, one to Layton High and one to Northridge specifically to look at their teen centers and look at the progress there. I, I wasn't able to catch up to Kaylee today at Northridge, but I will, I'll catch up. She was busy working hard in class, weren't you? But it's just amazing how much money was raised by the students at those two schools to help support their fellow students in need. And it's just wonderful to see the progress that's going on with those teen centers. So looking forward to opening those.
Ms. Vips?
Just briefly, that I've been very involved, engaged at the Capitol and, and actually feel things have been more positive than negative in general. I, I think that's a good thing because sometimes it, you worry about what is going to happen with things. But I just wanted, my thought there was just that it's, it's a privilege to be associated with a group of people that, that have helped, that maybe some misguided legislation has been stopped quickly because of the expertise and the testimony and the, the information that's been able to be gotten to legislators to help them understand the impact of, of some of what they've proposed. And, and so it's, it's great to be there and great to, to be able to work as a team with our legislators and try to, to, to do all that we can to improve public education in the state.
Ms. Mumford?
Thanks. A couple of quick things. The audit that we've been conducting on school fees is complete and they're finalizing that report. So that will be at our next workshop, which is great timing because they're working on that fee schedule right now. So we appreciate their work and I look forward to sharing that with you later this month. I was able to attend a really fun production of Annie at Caseville Junior High and just was so impressed with the student performances and also just the enthusiasm of the choir and theater teacher. It was a full seventh grade cast and they just did a really fun show. So that was a great experience. I've taken all the names that board members submitted and we've put together that community council focus group. So we're working with Dr. Tune on that and we'll follow up with the Board when we have some feedback from that group. I've been attending NAL games because I've got a little ninth grader that is in that academic league and I just wanted to express support. We've got teachers and volunteers and judges all across the district that made that season possible. So thank you to them in addition to our other athletic coaches and teams across the district. And then last thing I just thought I'd share with the Board. I've been listening in my car to the Bite Size PL podcasts that our district puts on and they're a great way to learn more about just little snippets of great things happening in Davis School District. So today I learned about dyslexia and I learned about Ms. Robbins and her role as a director. And so if you ever have a couple of minutes, it's a, it's a great way to understand some of the challenges that teachers are facing and ways that we're meeting those challenges with professional learning. So that's my report.
I'll just finish with just a comment about our Department of Justice process. I was on a Zoom call today for a couple of hours with our staff as well as Mr. Lin and his group, the Department of Justice attorneys. And I think all of us recognize that a lot of work is being done, but I don't think any of us have any idea how much work is being done. It's, it's a tremendous amount of responsibility for our district administration on top of all of the other responsibilities that they have. It's been a heavy, heavy load on our legal counsel. And having Safeguard with us is going to greatly enhance what we do moving forward because of their expertise. And it will lighten the load somewhat, but it also might increase the load in some areas that are, that are necessary in order for us to get to the position that we need to get to and, and be doing the, the things that we need to be doing on a daily basis to make a good district even better. But I'm very, very appreciative of what these men and women are doing. And I know as a Board, we need to continue to be aware as Superintendent Newey gives us updates. I think the updates are just kind of a, a real snapshot of all, of what is being done because there are many days where they do nothing else but this. So I'm not, I'm not in any way implying that we don't appreciate or anybody doesn't, but just to emphasize my appreciation and to recognize the fact that much work has been done and much work will be done in the future and we all need to be doing this together. This is nothing that we do alone. We, we do this together. So again, I express that appreciation. It will not be necessary, Board, for us to go into closed session this evening. So that concludes our meeting and we look forward to seeing you at workshop. Thank you.